Good evening and welcome to the Meet the Candidates, a forum for candidates in the November 8th general election. These candidates are for the office of Mayor of the city of Coon Rapids and also ongoing for Ward 3 and 5. I'm Lonnie McCauley with Blaine, Anoka and Coon Rapids area Leagues of Women Voters, which sponsors Meet the Candidates. All candidates were invited to this forum. The League of Voters does not support or oppose any political parties, I knew it was there somewhere, or candidates for office. The League does help citizens become informed voters and advocates for important issues. This forum is about informing voters. If you're interested in the League, visit our webpage at L W V A B C M N dot org. That's L W V A B C dot org. Women, men and young people are welcome. Now I will introduce Susan Witt, also of the ABC League of Women Voters, who lives in the city of Blaine and who will moderate the League.
Also, good evening. My name is Susan Witt and I am a League of Women Voters member. I live in Blaine, so I will not be voting in the Coon Rapids upcoming election. Welcome to the Coon Rapids Mayoral Forum with Sharon Compton and Jerry Cook. We'll start the forum with questions that the candidates are generally given in advance. Each candidate has 60 seconds to respond. Candidates will take turns giving, being the first to answer the question. And there was a drawing beforehand, so we will begin with Jerry Cook and he will begin with an opening statement.
Thank you. My name is Jerry Cook and I am grateful to serve as the mayor of the great city of Coon Rapids. I would first like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this candidate forum. My motivation is straightforward. Coon Rapids is my home and I love Coon Rapids. In 1952, my mom and dad moved here to make Coon Rapids our home. With my wife of more than 30 years, Sue, we decided to make Coon Rapids our home and along with myself, four of our now adult children graduated from Coon Rapids High School. And my mom, is 102 years old, still lives in her own place here in Coon Rapids and watches the council meetings, keeping us on track. We're very fortunate to have housing that allows our residents to stay and age in place and I want to continue to be a part of moving Coon Rapids forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon?
Hi, my name is Sharon Compton and I've lived in Coon Rapids since 1967 when my family moved from a small rural community, Mountain Lake, Minnesota, and made this their home. My father checked out the schools, the churches and was quite impressed with what Coon Rapids had to offer. I then met my husband, who's also a graduate of Coon Rapids High School. Their family owned the bowling alley in Coon Rapids for many years and we bowled together and now we're happily married. We have two small, or two boys, they are Daniel and Isaac, and we enjoy the city of Coon Rapids for many reasons.
Thank you. Our first question will go to Sharon. What is your motivation to run for this office and what experience or knowledge would help you to serve effectively?
Well, I have a compassion for people. I have a real compassion for small business that starts in the home. I think that if you look at Deluxe Check Printers, they started a business in their home many years ago and look where they are today. I believe that if people can start small and grow, we can fill up some of the commercial spaces that are out there that can be dealt with. I'm concerned that the small business is being left out, that the people are not being heard for what small businesses need. And we're spending a lot of time getting name brands in here, which are great, those are needed as well, but I'm very concerned that we attract small business so that it can grow into larger business.
Okay, thank you. Jerry?
Thank you. And kind of the second part of that question is what experience or knowledge would you help you to serve effectively? My motivation to run for the office, or run for mayor again is I just, I love Coon Rapids and I want to keep it moving forward. My current time on the council has led me to be the president of the North Metro Mayors Association, to serve on the executive board and as vice president of the Twin City Gateway Visitors Bureau, serve as one of three hosts for the Anoka County Elected Officials Meetings, serve on the Board of the Community Strength Foundation and the Board of Youth First. In my time as mayor, we've kicked off our annual tree lighting, which has turned out to be this hallmark event. We kicked off an all-class reunion to go in conjunction with our carnival. I stay involved, I am at everything and I would just like to keep going. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll begin with Jerry for the next question. With the recent legalization of hemp-derived cannabinoids in Minnesota and the conversation around full legalization of marijuana, what is your stance on legalization and regulation?
Thank you. So first, I'm disappointed with how that dropped on us. All of a sudden, it just seemed like it came out of the state and all of a sudden municipalities are forced to create regulations to deal with it. My concern, my biggest concern is just keeping it out of the hands of children and teenagers. Let's see, I am concerned about anything that makes access easier for children and if further legalization happens, it will be at the state level, so it really doesn't matter what I think about it. When things are done at the state, they do not consider unintended consequences at the city level sometimes and they create challenges at the local level that need to be regulated. I support creating local regulations as necessary to alleviate as best possible those challenges and that's actually what we're working on right now. It's just a way to regulate it locally until the state further modifies it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sharon, the same question?
Well, as much as I would like to oppose the legalization of it, I think we're caught between a rock and a hard place on the whole issue because unlike alcohol, you have, they have not figured out how to regulate it in the body to figure out when someone's over the legal limit. And I think that's the biggest problem with it. Now, I work for an assisted living and we had a house where a couple of people got a hold of marijuana and they were actually feeling better, they were happier, they were more content, a lot of their ailments seemed to go away. And so, do I support illegal drugs? Absolutely not, but marijuana is a substance that has proven to help people and so if it's moderated, legalized and regulated and as Jerry said too, keep it out of the hands of the kids, that is a big concern. But right now, the police can't enforce the marijuana stuff anyway. There's too much of it out there, there's just, they can't, and it's not a fault of theirs, it's just difficult to moderate it.
Thank you. And Sharon, we'll begin with the next question. LGA, or Local Government Aid, is money from the state government paid to city governments based on the city's unmet need? This need for a city such as Coon Rapids is determined by the jobs per capita and the age of the housing stock. What is your position on whether the state government should continue to pay LGA to cities and why?
I believe they should, until there is such a point where it can be self-sustaining, the city can be self-sustaining, but right now, so many people in Coon Rapids leave Coon Rapids to go to other workplaces to more commercially zoned communities. So I would say that at this point, we need to still keep it. I think it keeps the taxes down for people, I think that it helps the community, I don't see a reason to stop it at this point.
Thank you. Jerry, the same question?
Thank you. Minnesota legislators have been trying to find the fairest way to handle this aid for 55 years. It started in 1967 with the Tax Reform and Relief Act. Local government aid is to be used to fund local government property tax relief and although I don't find the language in there, it seems to be a method to incentivize homeownership in the state of Minnesota. 50 years ago, it was part of a larger tax reform effort known as the Minnesota Miracle, which was focused on reducing local property tax burdens and reforming and equalizing school financing across the state. 2013, again, the governor did a big plan and tried to reconfigure it, or reconfigured it again. The calculation of city need was simplified to three factors: city population, amount of tax-exempt property and percent of housing built before 1970 in each city. Almost irrespective of fairness, with Coon Rapids as a beneficiary, I am a big supporter of LGA.
Okay, thank you. And we begin again with you for the next question. Coon Rapids maintains its city parks. Describe your future plan for our city parks. How should upgrades to city parks be paid for? How would you redesign Al Flynn Park, which is the next park to be upgraded in the city?
Thank you. A portion of our annual budget needs to continue to be set aside for park maintenance and upgrades and as a nearly fully developed community, the infill developments do not provide a significant amount of park dedication fees, which is kind of how the old way parks were funded. The Park Bond Referendum that Coon Rapids voters passed nearly 10 years ago was a great cash infusion to our Parks and Trails and the Park Commission, along with the staff and the city council, did their best to get the biggest return on that investment. Sand Creek Park has become one of the prominent athletic complexes in the region and the Splash Pad at Boulevard Park is busy all summer. Lyons Coon Creek Park continues to be a park that's a regional draw and Crooked Lake Park is an absolute jewel and ever so popular on the shores of Crooked Lake. As for Al Flynn Park, I support the redevelopment plan that preserves the natural areas, the most of the park. Thank you.
Okay, the same question, Sharon?
Thank you. I drove through Al Flynn Park and have been there numerous times and find it to be the most peaceful, relaxing, mature place ever. You almost don't want to disturb it with any type of remodeling, but the ball fields look horrible, they need to be redone. I don't think that the playground area needs to be done. I think that sometimes in these parks, we redo the whole thing and give the whole place a whole new makeover, but I don't know financially that that is necessary. I think for the Al Flynn Park particularly, if you replace the ball fields, do as much as you can to keep it as natural as possible. And then also, there isn't a whole lot of room there to expand for parking and additional amenities that could be given there. But we have, it's a beautiful park, Coon Rapids has beautiful parks, but I think we spend too much money redoing the whole thing at one time.
Thank you. Sharon, you'll begin again with the next question. What role should the city have in encouraging new housing developments? What type of housing do you believe is needed in this city?
I think a nice variety, which is happening right now. I think the Planning Commission has done a great job of the apartments that are going up over by the train tracks. I think there's some single-family condominium townhomes that have gone up, there's plenty of new developments that are going up. So I think they should just continue doing what they're doing. I have talked to a few residents, they're a little concerned that the tiny community they moved into years ago is getting all developed. Well, that's kind of how it works, but I think that overall, the city Planning Commission has done an excellent job of balancing that. I do get concerned about multiple dwelling areas, that we become too much like some of the other cities like Brooklyn Park, that seems to have a lot of crime in those areas, but you know, that's not a reason not to do it. I think that's just a concern I have.
Thank you. Same question to Jerry.
Thank you. The what type of housing depends on the where we're putting it. As a nearly fully developed community, the type of housing needed will vary by where the development is located and the makeup of what is already at the location. We have several lots that will be coming online off of Coon Creek Drive and the logical housing will be single-family homes because that's the nature of the neighborhood. Shade Tree is currently building townhomes up off Robinson Drive and that makes sense for that. We were, we were given a proposal for a 100-unit apartment building there that didn't fit in that neighborhood well, but 15 townhomes do make sense. The original, yeah. Centra Homes is building 136 detached single-family homes on Coon Rapids Boulevard and that seems like a good fit for there. So it all depends on the neighborhood.
Thank you. The next question began with Jerry. What is your stance on allowing multiple waste haulers, like we currently do in Coon Rapids, versus moving towards a single hauler, either for the city or for a ward?
Yeah, that's a really big conversation and I remember about 12 years ago, before I was ever on the city council, the city council chambers were filled because people have very strong opinions about who hauls their trash. I have concerns with five licensed residential haulers in town, that we've got 15 trucks going down the same street picking up waste, recycling and yard waste on given days. I would like to see us go to a consortium where we have maybe the same, the same five haulers, but they all have a certain portion of the city to pick up from. That would be marvelous. I'm not willing to make any changes without a referendum. I want the residents to understand completely what we're looking at, the benefits, the pros, the cons, and I want, and I want to go to a referendum as part of a regular election. I wouldn't have a special election for it.
Thank you. Sharon, the same question?
I totally oppose a single hauling garbage company in the city of Coon Rapids. I have had to call to deal with those types of programs at cities, not Coon Rapids, and it's a nightmare. It's by the time you get through to talk to somebody, the next hauling day has come. It's not user-friendly, it's a monopoly, they tax you, you have no control over what's happening. And yeah, I can see that, you know, trucks might go down the same street, five different ones, but we also have the Amazon trucks and the, the police, not the police, but the mail trucks, we have FedEx going down, UPS, we have a lot of traffic on our city streets. That's part of living in a city. But I absolutely do not support that we would have one garbage hauler in the city of Coon Rapids. I think that is, that is controlling way more than we need to control.
Thank you. And we'll begin with you on the next question. Actually, this is the, this is the actual last question before our closing statements. To strengthen our city's resilience to unpredictable climate changes, what initiatives do you propose or what current initiatives do you want to expand?
Well, first of all, I do think that climate control from a standpoint of being able to control it is strictly, I would say, up to God. I do not know that, that emissions or those things affect it as much as they do, but I do think we have to be responsible and make sure that we are not adding to our environment either through the ground, through the air, whatever, that we do need to be aware of what we're doing to our environment that may affect the climate. I'm more concerned about catastrophic things that would come, like tornadoes, flooding, unprecedented snowstorms, that are we prepared for those? Have we learned from the other communities around the world, around the United States, when they've had unexpected tornadoes, what have they done? How are other communities handling those things? That would be a bigger concern.
Thank you. Jerry?
Thank you. Coon Rapids is already a leader in our area. We are one of only 35 green step cities in the state of Minnesota that has attained Step 5, which lists 29 best practices we've taken to be more environmentally conscious: LED streetlights, lighting conversions in our buildings, solar ordinance promoting solar arrays, lessening our runoff into the river, creating more bike and walking, walking friendly neighborhoods. I support environmental friendly upgrades or modifications when they're cost-effective and they make sense. That's kind of where I'm at on that. Thank you.
Thank you. We now will have our closing, one-minute closing statements and we'll be starting with Jerry.
All right. And I'm going to read this to make it a minute. "I hope my work has, I hope my work as mayor is found to be worthy of another term. Every decision I make is based on what is best for Coon Rapids. It is said that it is easy to get things done when you don't care who gets credit for it. That's how I operate as mayor and given the great relationship we have with staff, we've been able to get a lot done for Coon Rapids. From park redevelopment, the Splash Pad, the amazing sports complex, to keeping a vital golf course, restaurant and event center flourishing. We have worked together to navigate a pandemic with a steady hand and without overreaction. We did the best we could to mitigate interruptions for our businesses in town and tried our best to keep Coon Rapids operating as normal as possible. We have had much-needed development and improvements along Coon Rapids Boulevard and I hope to keep working to keep moving Coon Rapids forward. With all of this in mind, I humbly ask for your vote. Thank you."
Thank you. And Sharon, your closing statement?
Well, my concern is for the small person, the individual homeowner. I'm very concerned that Coon Rapids has over-ordinanced people to the point that some of them can't even function. In talking with several people, I'm concerned when a special needs child needs a certain fence modification and the answer is no. I'm concerned when a sober house in Coon Rapids who's helping people doesn't get one single vote from the city council to support what needed to happen. And I personally know someone that came out of that type of a situation and she's a nurse where I work, and the work that the organizer was doing is beyond, beyond what any of us could do at a very low cost. I'm concerned that each individual homeowner is recognized for their individual needs and how do we support them? How do we lower the ordinances? How do we get rid of the things that don't make any sense? The city of Coon Rapids is a beautiful place, I support many of those ordinances, but there are some that need to go away. We can't even fix our car in our own driveway, that's one of them, so.
Thank you. And thank you, candidates, for speaking to voters about issues and for just running for the position of mayor of Coon Rapids. We will now take a five-minute break and prepare for the candidates for Ward 3. Thank you very much. Okay. We will restart the forum by welcoming the Coon Rapids Ward 3 candidates, Pablo Hernandez and Sean Novak. The candidates will answer introductory questions which they received in advance, followed by any questions submitted by the public via our website and questions of importance to the League of Women Voters. We'll end with closing statements. Candidates will take turns being the first to answer the question and answers will be limited to 60 seconds for each question. We will begin the opening statement with Pablo.
All right. I'm Pablo Hernandez Jr. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for this forum tonight. And the question is, is what is it all about? Is it about the signs? Is it about the door knocking? Is it about the forums? The endorsements? The question is, what is it? I think for me, it's the excitement of speaking in front of people, expressing my views, listening to their views and putting ourselves out there. And it takes a special kind of person to do that, not only for myself, but Sean as well. And the experience of meeting new people every day, I've had the chance to meet different kind of people, different from myself, and it's been quite the experience and others I haven't met in my entire life. And I think this whole experience is what it's been all about for me.
Thank you. Sean, your opening statement?
When answering a question like that, just to make that opening statement, I'd just like to say that, again, thank you to the League of Women Voters for opening this up. As I mentioned at the primary discussion, these types of forums are vital when it comes to getting information out to the public about the candidates. And I'm sure both Pablo and I would not have the resources to do this kind of thing on our own. So again, I need to thank all of you for doing this and I hope that the folks at home pay close attention. This is a momentous time in our country, a lot is going on and we, all of us, need to pay attention to the candidates and to the issues and make our decisions accordingly.
Thank you. Sean, we'll begin with you for the first question. What is your motivation to run for office and what experience or knowledge would help you to serve effectively?
My motivation for office is simply serving the city that I love. I was raised here, graduated class of 89 and I've always enjoyed the idea of community service. It's something that I got from my parents and the highest form of political, pardon me, of community service is political action. I have no desire to go on to any other office, but to be able to serve my home city, I think would be the highest honor and it would be my greatest pleasure.
Thank you. Pablo, your answer to the same question?
The motivation for me, for this office is my parents. I'm a second-generation immigrant. My dad came from Mexico, he worked hard, made a living for us and that motivated me to serve my city that I've lived in for 20 years and that I choose to live here for the remainder of my time on this planet. And the knowledge that I bring is I've worked with the youth, I've worked with the residents, the parents, to give opportunities and just like Sean had said, I don't plan anything higher than this. And I enjoy right now, in my 10th month, as, serving as the current council member for Coon Rapids and this is what I love and I enjoy every moment of it.
Okay, thank you. Pablo, we'll go to you for the second question. With the recent legalization of hemp-derived cannabinoids in Minnesota and the conversation around full legalization of marijuana, what is your stance on legalization and regulation?
With this, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring it home on this. There's very, there's many forms of marijuana and there's very, there's a lot of benefits to this. You know, my father is over at Epiphany, he suffers from Parkinson's disease, there's a lot of children and a lot of adults that suffer different forms of epilepsy, so when it comes to cannabis oil, there's a lot of benefits also that we could get from this. And I think with the proper regulations on a municipal and a state stage, we could really benefit and get some proper revenues from this and really benefit as a state and on a municipal, city level, if done properly. So with that being said, I would support this if done properly.
Thank you. Sean, the same question?
Well, there are obviously two sides of this issue. The first issue is medical marijuana, cannabinoids used only for medical purposes and the second is for recreational use. As an epileptic myself, I have been told by many doctors that is a treatment that I may want to consider. I've got a fairly severe hand tremor from the current medication that I take and it may help alleviate that. Now recrea, pardon me, recreationally, having worked with Hennepin County at detox centers as well as Hennepin County Methadone Clinic, I've seen the downside of substance abuse. Therefore, I have no desire to consume cannabinoids, but I also don't often drink alcohol and always avoid drinking to excess. With that said, I have no issue with anybody who wishes to partake in any mind-altering substance, provided they're used responsibly and don't affect their behavior in any criminal way. In a free country, a person should be able to put into their own body whatever they wish. The one caveat I would add is that if one commits a criminal act while under the influence of any mind-altering substance, including alcohol, then it would no longer be a mitigating circumstance, it would be an aggravating one.
Thank you. Sean, or you will have, begin with the next question? LGA, or Local Government Aid, is money from the state government paid to city governments based on the city's unmet need? This need for a city such as Coon Rapids is determined by the jobs per capita and the age of the housing stock. What is your position on whether the state government should continue to pay LGA to cities and why?
As a financial professional, this is the kind of calculation that I do for families every day. Basically, local government aid is a little understood formula that involves the amount of money a city needs to supply basic services and then how much they have the capacity to raise through taxes. If a city's need is greater than the amount that they can raise, then they are given money from the state to help supply those services. To calculate need, the state looks at how many people live in the city and also the age of the houses in the city. Older housing generally Older housing generally means lower property values and can also mean older infrastructure, which costs more to fix and maintain. This combination generally creates a greater need and means the city would be eligible for more LGA. The problem with local government aid is that what it essentially is is another form of redistribution of wealth. While I wouldn't have supported the idea of local government aid when it was first introduced back in the '70s, 50 years later, it's a fact of life that must be addressed. Cities across the state have grown to depend on this money for the last several decades, and the system needs to be reformed so that the local governments will be better able to know from year to year how much money they will be receiving.
Thank you. The same question, Pablo?
Yeah. So as for this as well, I think we've, you know, grown to depend on this, or I believe over the last 14 years. And, you know, we've depended on it, and we have to figure out as well to figure out different ways on how to manage as a city, how to better fund different buckets in forms of different funds that we raise. And because right now, the average household income in Coon Rapids is $82,571, and with a property rate of 6.3%. So maybe, you know, for now, if we can get by with a possible LGA to kind of bridge that gap until we can figure out what we can do and better spend in different ways. You know, I'm all for finding new ways on how to manage that funding.
Thank you. The next question, Pablo, you will begin with, we will begin with you. Coon Rapids maintains its city parks. Describe your future plan for our city parks. How would you, how should upgrades to the city parks be paid for? How would you redesign Al Flynn Park, which is the next park to be upgraded in the city?
I think first off, describing your future, the plan for city parks, we should look at first and foremost the dire need as an order, what needs to get done first, how should upgrades to city parks be paid for? I think we should still keep it under the Park Improvement Fund, yet look at possible extra funding down the line, which would include trails as well. How would I look at redesigning Al Flynn Park? I would look more at a nature-based park design. I think Coon Rapids as well, we are, what's the word? Long overdue for a nature-based park. And I've seen some concepts with that, and I think we're looking, heading in the right direction with that. And I think the next park that should be upgraded down the line is Kennedy Park off of East River Road.
Thank you. Sean, the same question.
With the payment of the improvement of the parks, it would definitely have to come out of the Park Improvement Fund. That's something that I would want to take a look at, audit, and see what kind of condition that fund is in. You know, as a child growing up in Coon Rapids, my friends and I used virtually every park in the city at one point or another. And since then, many new parks have been created, and I've brought my children to them to enjoy. And the city does have an excellent usage mix of parks in the city. Excuse me, some are designed for children's recreation, some are for sports like the skate park, and some simply an open area for multipurpose use. I do appreciate the fact that the council is seeking public input on how to redesign Al Flynn, and I'd happily go with that consensus. Ultimately, the citizens should decide what to do with their public space. But since you're asking my personal opinion, as a baseball fan and occasional softball player, I enjoy having the ball fields there. There are, they are more than 20 years old, excuse me, and they could use a few touch-ups, but all the infrastructure is already there to keep them lit and usable long into the night.
Thank you. Sean, what role should the city have in encouraging new housing developments? And what type of housing do you believe is needed in the city?
This is a sticky question. Coon Rapids has been a rapidly growing city for a long time. We've grown nearly 30% since I graduated from high school back here in 1989. Looking around, I don't see a lot of places left to build residential areas. We also need to be aware of the demographics of our population. 88% of those who actually own their own home are married couples. And more than 50% of that population that do own a home in Coon Rapids is age 35 or older. So statistically, they're unlikely to remain in that home for more than 20 years. Having a long-term governmental plan to expand housing in a city that is already significantly built out seems irresponsible when half of the population of that city is likely to moved on from where they are right now to a different portion of the city or even to a different city in the next 20 years.
Thank you. Pablo, the same question.
Yeah. To pretty much piggyback on that, you know, Coon Rapids, I think we're roughly around 96% capacity. And we are losing space little by little each year. And, you know, we're seeing more market-rate apartments come up. And me personally, I believe that's not the answer. I believe more in having skin in the game. I believe more in long-term relationships. With that being said, you know, if we're up to me, if we did have the space, you know, I would encourage more single-family homes. And, you know, that's pretty much my stance on that, and I would encourage more if we did have the space for that.
Thank you. And Pablo, then what is your stance on allowing multiple waste haulers like we currently do in Coon Rapids versus moving towards a single hauler either for the whole city or for a ward?
You know, I think this is gonna be a hot topic in the next year or two. And, you know, what the damage is being done to our streets currently right now, when you've got multiple, upon multiple garbage trucks driving through, I could see both sides of this, you know, trucks going to the neighborhoods. And then you look on the other side of that, could be less cost to the residents of the city. But then again, you look at the other side, you're taking away the right to choose who they want to do business with. You know, we're gonna have to look at these things down the line eventually. My, my stance on it, I want to leave it up to the residents. I would like to see a town hall meeting in time, each ward, mayor, city council, or with the, with the city manager, talk this out. I'd like to get a consensus on this. I'm not, I'm not, I don't want to be the one to make the decision on this. I want the residents to, you know, have their decision on this.
Thank you. Sean, the same question.
Well, I always prefer choice of service providers in all things, as any monopoly will quickly gain the ability to increase prices and hold consumers hostage to those prices. For example, cable and satellite providers can only raise their rates so much with their customers, or those customers will flock to alternative broadcasting. With one, pardon me, with only one waste hauler, citizens would quickly lose the ability to have any say in the services that they're going to be getting, and they'd quickly lose any say in what those prices would be. Those services would then be held hostage to that because the citizens have to have that particular service. Now, again, the cost of the roads, that is something that needs to be taken into account. But that is a study that I would absolutely have to see in order to even consider a solution, like removing consumer choice.
Thank you. Sean, this is actually the last question before our closing, you'll have an opportunity to make the closing statement. So the last question is, to strengthen our city's resilience to unpredictable climate changes, what initiatives do you propose? Or what current initiatives do you want to see expanded?
Our charter reads, and I quote, "The city shall have all powers it may now or hereafter be, to be possible for a municipal corporation in this state to exercise in harmony with the constitutions of this state and of the United States. It is the intention of this charter that every power which the people of the city of Coon Rapids might lawfully confer upon themselves as a municipal corporation by specific enumeration in this charter shall be deemed to have been so conferred by the provisions of this section." There are 39 definitions that follow that paragraph in our city charter, and none of them mention anything about the city council having the least authority to pass initiatives on climate change. I believe that if the private sector wishes to institute non-fossil alternatives such as solar, wind, or nuclear, then the council should work with them if that's the desire of the majority of the citizens that they represent. Since the county is the administrator of the Coon Rapids Dam, they're responsible for any hydroelectric capabilities there. It's the responsibility of the city council to follow the city charter and not invent powers and responsibilities for themselves.
Thank you. Pablo?
You know, it's been, you know, talked about for quite a while now. I think, you know, the restoring of the Coon Rapids Dam power generating capabilities. I like the fact that if it were to come to fruition, the dam would retrofit to produce a 10-megawatt, 10-megawatts, which would be equivalent to enough power 20,000 homes. And the current initiatives that we do have right now, I looked up, we currently do have 45 permitted solar projects going on, and we are growing with that along with our, our solar gardens. And we are steadily growing to become a greener city. And I am all for expanding that as well. And so, yeah, that's, that's a great, that's a great goal to achieve, and I'm all for all those programs.
Thank you. Now come to the spot for our closing statements, and we will begin with Pablo.
Again, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for this forum tonight and for the opportunity. And I just want to close with, you know, I'm not a politician. I'm just a, just a 43-year-old man from Coon Rapids, father of three, softball coach, you know, wrestling, basketball, all in the sports. And I deeply care about this community, and I care about the residents, and I feel like I've created many opportunities. I put a lot of blood, sweat, and many tears into this city and into the, the youth and to the parents. Lot of phone calls, lot of late-night chats. And I do plan on continuing that on a broader scale with the residents of Ward Three. And we've had plenty of conversations in the door-knocking campaign. And we still are gonna continue that moving forward, so I'd like to thank everybody again.
Thank you. Sean, your closing statement.
As a resident and a business owner of Ward Three, I'd like to be able to say that I can represent not only the people who live here, the citizens, but also the businesses that provide their jobs. We have got to be able to marry the needs of those two groups if we're going to move forward as a city. We've seen now, over the course of the last 10 years or so, the population of this city really increased, but has now recently been leveling off. But with the expansion of Riverdale, the renewal of the Coon Rapids Boulevard Main Street corridor, we need to be able to make sure that as we grow and as we evolve, we're doing so in a way that protects both the citizens and the businesses in our nation, pardon me, in our city.
Thank you. And thank you, candidates, for speaking to voters about the issues and for running for Ward Three in the city of Coon Rapids. We will now take a five-minute break and prepare for the candidates for Ward Five. Thank you again. We will restart the forum by welcoming the Coon Rapids Ward Five candidates, Brian Armstrong and Jonathan Haaschild. The candidates will answer introductory questions which they received in advance, followed by any questions submitted by the public via our website, and questions of importance to the League of Women Voters. We'll end with closing statements. The answers are limited to 60 seconds for each question, and candidates will take turns being the first to answer a question. And we'll begin with an opening statement by John.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for putting this on and look forward to tonight. My name is John Haaschild. I was raised in Plymouth, Minnesota. I'm a seven-year resident of Coon Rapids, Minnesota, in the fifth ward. I work construction as a self-employed business owner, and I look forward to the opportunity of serving my community.
Thank you. Brian, your opening statement.
Thank you to the ABC League of Women Voters and citizens of Coon Rapids for allowing me the time here. My name is Brian Armstrong, and I'm running for the open city council seat in Ward Five. I was born and raised in Coon Rapids, and I love this city. I wouldn't have it any other way. It is my home. I spent my adult life married to my wife, Terri, of 36 years, and we've got three children that we raised here and raised through the school district. I've served the city of Coon Rapids for 13 years as a Coon Rapids Police Reserve Officer, served on the Safety Commission and in the Lions Club as well. I've also coached Little League Baseball, CRA Football for a number of years, focusing on building kids' skills, positive attitude, and working as a team. In my career, I'm a president of the Small Minnesota Business and run a fiscally sound budget strategizing for future growth. These life experiences have all led me to today and my seeking for your vote for city council.
Thank you. Brian, what is your motivation to run for this office? And what experience or knowledge would help you to serve effectively?
Well, my parents raised us always to leave a situation in a better shape than we found it and to make the world a better place. I strove to do that through my life, in my marriage, raising my children, and in business. Now that my children are growing up, I want to go back to serving my community again. I believe the lessons I've learned along the road as a reserve officer, parent, businessperson, have taught me to listen more to people, know when to seek out counsel, and be fiscally responsible with my money and everybody else's. The most important thing, though, is always to be truthful, be transparent with who you're dealing with. I believe these are all necessary strengths for being on the city council and serving its people. My goal is to make Coon Rapids a place people want to move to, to stay at, because it's safe, affordable, and it feels like home.
Thank you. John, the same question.
Motivation I have is I'm very interested in politics on a local and a larger-scale level. I'm excited about the possibilities of having a voice of my community and my neighbors and the people around me. I've been very active with my daughter's sports, the community, and the park systems, and it's something that means a lot to me and to the other people around me. I'm also very interested in keeping the housing market strong here in Coon Rapids and making it a place that people want to move to and live. And because of the small-town values and quality of life we have, that's something that's very important to me.
Thank you. Our next question, John. With the recent legalization of hemp-derived cannabinoids in Minnesota and the conversation around full legalization of marijuana, what is your stance on legalization and regulation?
Legalization of marijuana, in my time as a young adult, it's moving really fast to where it's gonna become legal at some point. It's in 19 states already. There's talk of numerous states, including Minnesota, and also at a federal level. I think it's something that will happen, and it's something as a city we should be prepared for because it can create jobs and it can help. If with the regulations, if we set it up properly, we can use that revenue like other states have and give it back to our schools, parks, and communities. Something that is gonna happen rather than it hitting us in the face and then trying to figure out how to properly regulate it.
Thank you. Brian, the same question.
First and foremost, it has to be the safety of our community, especially...
First and foremost, it has to be the safety of our community, especially with our underage kids, where CBD gummies and similar products can be very popular. They are popular. With my police reserve background, I stand with law enforcement on this issue. For starters, enforce the laws as they currently stand, and yeah, we're gonna have to adapt as the situation moves forward. As the laws change, as you recently, as you mentioned just recently, the city's gonna have to make decisions based on those changes. Available products, regulation, et cetera, they're all fluid right now. So things, as John said, are moving at a fast pace. I know there's medicinal values to cannabinoids, and we continue to learn more as time goes on, and that's a good thing. My goal would be to keep the people updated on factual information and how to deal with the misuse to come along with this. We only need to look at the current states that are further ahead of us to see we've got things to take care of.
Thank you. Brian, you have the next question first. Oh, wait a minute, did I? I'm sorry. You both have answered the LGA question. No.
Nope.
It's John's turn to answer the question about the... Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking ahead to the next question. It's Brian will begin the next question. Is LGA, or Local Government Aid, is money from the state government paid to city governments based on the city's unmet need? This city, or this need for a city such as Coon Rapids is determined by the jobs per capita and the age of the housing stock. What is your position on whether the state government should continue to pay LGA to cities, and why?
This is one of those areas that I am still investigating, and here's why. I understand what LGA is. I understand that it helps cities fund projects with budgets that they couldn't otherwise afford, and that sounds great. If it was a perfect world and every city received equal shares and there was full transparency, there wouldn't be an issue. But, for example, 2022, the city of Coon Rapids received one-point-two million dollars in LGA money. From what I've seen, the money is being used well and based on what the city intended it to be for. But for 2023, zero. I'm trying to find out, with the upcoming projects the city has on the horizon, why that is the case, why there was no money for this year. I'm looking, I'm looking for answers. I've got a lot of questions on this area. I think it could be a beneficial program, but again, there's a lot of unanswered questions for me.
Thank you. John, the same question.
As Brian emphasized, there are a lot of questions, and there's a lot of gray area when it comes to LGAid, LGA, Local Government Aid. In a perfect world, Coon Rapids should continue to receive it. Our, our community, our citizens pay taxes. We should get that money back to benefit our, our city and our community.
Thank you. John, the Coon Rapids maintains its city parks. Describe your future plan for our city parks, and how should upgrades to city parks be paid for? And how would you redesign Al Flynn Park, which is the next park to be upgraded in the city?
The parks are great here in Coon Rapids. It's something I really loved moving here because they're on the cutting edge. We've updated a lot of our parks, especially Sand Creek turned out to be a phenomenal complex. And it's something that on every weekend, regardless if it's the fall like we're getting into now or the summer, it's filled with kids. That's what parks should be, filled with kids and people coming together as a community. Al, the Al Flynn Park, I really like the two options. I really like more the, the nature angle of it because it's such a beautiful complex there, an area that can be utilized to kind of have that woods feel in the city.
Thank you. Brian, same question.
You're, I'm showing my age now because I used to swim in the clay hole that is at, at Al Flynn Park when the city actually allowed it. But as a parent of kids that were in sports and doing park patrol for the reserves, I've seen how much these parks get used and how important they are to the entire city. The park and trail systems, I brag to coworkers all the time because of the number of parks we've got in our city. They don't, they don't believe me, so I love to show them that the numbers are true. I know Al Flynn Park is, is a great park. I know it's showing its age. I think it was our first park that was ever built in the city if I remember correctly. But I attended the Parks Department Open House earlier this year, and also was at the council meeting last night. I, I believe they're leaning towards option two, the nature side of things, which I, I love because I think we need to keep the green space. I think we need to, to keep the old-growth trees, and that's a positive direction to go.
Thank you. Jonathan, the same question. I'm sorry, I got mixed. Brian has the next question. What role should the city have in encouraging new housing developments? And what type of housing do you believe is needed in the city?
The city should always be encouraging new housing developments while at the same time striving to make it affordable for, for bringing new people into the, to the city. The challenge we've got with today's market and the amount of available space is one of the biggest challenges we have to deal with. As with the city of our size, we need a blend of housing depending on the area of the cities. For instance, with Anoka Ramsey and Mercy Hospital over on the Boulevard, you've got students and medical staff that are looking for affordable apartments, one, two-person occupancy for their needs. That's not the way it is all the way around the city. We also need to make homes affordable for young families to move here and stay here. I'm a big fan of the CEE program and the Homes for Generation program offered through the cities. We got these great Orin Thompson homes that have great bones to them. We can take them, re-modernize them in the 21st century and make them affordable for young families.
Thank you. John, the same question.
The housing market per se or area for Coon Rapids, for us, our community is so aged and developed, we don't have the large space that some of these smaller, younger cities do around us. I personally think we need more affordable, single-family housing. The neighborhoods that we do have, especially in, in the Ward Five, they're old fifty Rambler's houses. We don't need apartments around those communities. The constituents don't want skyscrapers around the nice communities that we have developed. Some of the, the grant systems that Coon Rapids has in place, they're great options for people that have these houses that do have great foundations to build off and have that new, modern look that people are looking for in building a new house.
Thank you. John, what is your stance on allowing multiple waste haulers like we currently do in Coon Rapids versus moving toward a single hauler either for the city or for a ward?
Generally, I believe competition is a good thing unless there's a significant difference in price or services. If we can lock it into one business that would benefit the community and the people. That being said, if it makes sense, it makes more sense to me if we're gonna have one hauler for the city rather than per ward.
Okay, thank you. Brian, the same question.
If, if you go out to the Next Door app, you'll know that this is already a hot topic. People are already talking about it. They have been for years. The whole, the whole question really can't be covered in a minute, but I currently believe competition is good to keep the prices down and also give the people of Coon Rapids the right to choose who they want to do business with. In the work session last night, there was examples of multi-haulers, single-haulers, and a blend of both. I saw a number of really good ideas come out of that collaboration that would help reduce environmental impact on the city while providing flexibility for its citizens. If you look around at surrounding cities, where different options have been tried, you'll see there's a lot of work to still be done to educate ourselves on available options, new technology, and what's in the best interest of the people of Coon Rapids. Most importantly, as we go through this gathering facts, we need to be transparent with the people in the city to update them on what's going on and what direction we're going.
Thank you. Brian, this is now the, the last question before closing statements as well. To strengthen our city's resilience to unpredictable climate changes, what initiatives do you propose, or what current initiatives do you want to see expanded?
Well, right now, my wife and I are already involved in a number of the sustainability programs that the, the city offers. We already utilize the Center Point Energy Savings Program that, that's been set up. We use smart irrigation system to reduce the water usage. We're on the Lawns to Legumes Program to help create pollinator habitats and, and also use the Anoka County Master Gardener Program. I'm following the beekeeping pilot program right now because my, my daughter-in-law is a beekeeper, and I find it rather interesting, but that's where my wife draws the line. She won't let me do the chickens in the backyard. But I'm also involved in a program for tracking the stormwater runoff during the winter for chemical content usage on the roads and the driveways. Areas I want to focus on is our waterways, our water usage program, as well as the forestry division of the, the city to ensure we're not only keeping but restoring those resources.
Thank you. Sorry. Jonathan, the same question.
Climate control, it's a, it's a very new, hot topic that's moving quick in the, in the forefront of our moving forward in the future. I believe Coon Rapids is a very good base of a good starting point of what to build off of. Our parks are great. We, we plant good things. The vegetation doesn't get destroyed, the trees don't get destroyed, and there's a lot of old trees and stuff like that that we shouldn't, that's, that's kind of a staple of our community. There's numerous things we can do with water consumption, recycling, the dam. I mean, I'm pretty sure it used to be a hydro dam at some point. We could, that could be something we could bring back, that's, that's energy there, and also getting people on board and make it affordable for them through their power company, what they are trying to get solar involved in people's lives, and using that free energy that's around us all the time.
Thank you. Jonathan, we've come to the closing statements, and you will begin with one-minute clothing, closing statement.
I really appreciate the time of not only Brian, the League of Women Voters, but the community of Coon Rapids for giving us this opportunity to get our voices heard to the voters. I look forward to hopefully serving my Ward Five and the community and being a voice moving forward for Coon Rapids.
Thank you. Brian?
There's a lot going on in the world and our communities that weren't even happening a year or two years ago, and, and I get that. Things are moving fast. What should not change, though, is how the city looks out for the safety of its citizens and keeps their citizens' best interest in mind first and foremost. The topics we covered tonight, the cannabinoids, parks, housing, et cetera, all have one common denominator, and that is the citizens of Coon Rapids. You and us together, that's what drives the city, and that's what's important. I want to be your community voice in Ward Five, and I want to make sure that happens for everyone equally. Again, I'm Brian Armstrong, running for Ward Five. Reach out to me if you want to at Armstrong, number four, council dot com, or email me at Armstrong four council five at gmail dot com. I appreciate any and all input.
Thank you. And thank you, candidates, for speaking to voters and about issues and for just running for Ward Five Council. Thanks to CTN for their video production this evening. And thank you, viewers, for your interest in becoming informed voters. As we move through the election season, link to all of our election forums at LWVABCmn.org, as well as the CTN website and YouTube. If you need to register to vote or to update your registration, you can do that online at mnvotes.org or when you go, the day you go to vote. Make your voice heard in the general election by voting on or before November eighth. Thank you.